Stothard.
Here.
Thompson. Thompson?
Here.
Festerson?
Here.
Gurnett?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for invocation by Council Vice President Gurnett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we pray with joy and thankfulness for your mercy to us as we begin our earthly work. Amen.
City Clerk certifies publication of daily record on December 16th in Osprey Pre-Council and regular City Council meeting, December 20, 2011. Current copy, opening exact is posted in white binder on East Wall Legislative Chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome. This Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Zoning ordinance on final reading and planning board attachments, item number five. Ordinance to rezone property located at 200810141620, North 25th Street, 2502441/678, Patrick Avenue, 2502468, Blondo Street, from R7 to R4, Single Family Residential District, High Density A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem?
What are we on here?
Five.
Number five.
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Ordinance on final reading and planning board attachments, item number six. Ordinance vacating a portion of 78th Street right-of-way south of West Center Road. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And B, communication from Warren.
Public hearings were held.
And C? C is also communication. And we have an amendment, which is D.
Public hearings were held on November the 22nd and December the 6th.
Okay, whatever.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, is this a floor amendment or is this an amendment?
This is, this is an amendment.
Amendment C?
Yeah.
I'd like to move Amendment C, which allows this council to value the right-of-way at $9 per square foot and renumber the sections accordingly. This would be an insertion for a new section three.
Yep.
Hope I get a second.
Thanks.
The motion dies for lack of a second.
Well, I want to, I do, I had a question about which was why my light was on.
Okay.
So, question.
It hasn't died yet, then.
Item C, item C is the floor amendment.
Correct.
Okay, and there is no item D or C?
No, no.
No communications.
That's, there, I thought there were two communications. One communication and then just this.
Okay. So, we discussed this a little bit pre-council because it was a little bit confusing last week, this item, as to what the council can and cannot do when it comes to vacation and setting valuations as such. And this is a contested valuation that's had a determination by the city but also one by the applicant or the business involved in the vacation. And essentially, it's a $10 versus $8 discussion of what's been appraised by two professional appraisers. And so, I believe, Mr. Thompson, your floor amendment, can you explain your floor amendment a little bit that identifies $9 as your desired amount?
I see validity in both appraisals, and I believe that if we meet halfway, the $9 figure creates a win-win situation for both the city and hefe hefe.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Kratz, we had a discussion about this on a public hearing last week, and it was a little bit unclear in the exchange what the council's ability to do in the situation is, but it is the proper course of action. Should the council want to take action on this item to approve this floor amendment and then approve it as amended if we desire to alter the city's appraisal, correct?
That'd be correct.
And it's, and again, it's based on two professional appraisals, so it's not, it's not random in that regard.
It's not random from that standpoint. But on the other hand, as I mentioned in pre-council, the council has set up a process on how to value these pieces of property, and you have a committee that makes that valuation, and, you know, that becomes the appraised value. But certainly, the council's able to, I guess, accept other numbers and other figures if it so desires.
And that's somewhat neat to the vacation process we're discussing today.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Festerson, may I just jump in real quick, please?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz, this is not something new. We've done this before, haven't we? I'm not sure if we've done it on vacations before the council on occasion has, once they disregard it, but has overruled or passed something notwithstanding an existing ordinance. I don't remember if we ever, if we've done it necessarily with vacationing. But let the record show that it's, we're not necessarily setting a precedent today. Thank you.
Mr. Gurnett? Someone just seconded?
Yes.
I'll make it short. I think the city has made their case. I'm going to make a motion to approve item six.
We have the amendment first.
That's what I was going to do.
Yeah, I understand.
I didn't know there was going to be a second.
Gotcha.
So, roll call.
This is on the amendment. Jerem?
No.
Stothard?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
No.
Gray?
No.
Mr. President?
No.
It fails on a two to five vote. Now, we need a motion on six.
Motion to approve. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed on a six to one vote. Number seven, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Elk Creek Pines to allow automotive repair services located at 3837 North 168th Street. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number seven begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Item number eight, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Ridgeview to allow the development of an apartment complex located southwest of 185th Street and West Center Road. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda, item number eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Jason Lanahan, on behalf of Lanahan Real Estate Company, 19111, West Center Road. I'm pleased to answer any questions on your behalf. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. For City Council Rule 7H, due to no meetings being held December 27th and January 3rd, 2012, agenda item number nine should be laid over three weeks to January 10th for publication and public hearing. Liquor, item number 10, Beercade, 6102 Maple Street, Class C liquor license nullification, new location. If you wish to grant, you'd need to grant contingent on their getting a proper permits.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 10 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, my name is John Larkin, representing ACR Corp., DBA Beercade, 6102 Maple Street. May I answer any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick word, on behalf of Mr. Larkin, we appreciate his new investment in Benson. This is another new business occurring in Benson, a new renovation in the area to add to his current business. And I know he's a strong operator with his current business, Jake Cigars. And I know this will be a nice addition to Maple Street there, so I'd go ahead and move approval of this subject to getting the proper permits and inspections.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 11, Silk Road, 681 North 132nd Street, Class I liquor license nullification, new location, note your reports.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jerry Nielsen, manager of Silk Road, 681 North 132nd Street. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Stothard.
Thank you. Is this Mr. C. Young?
Yes, that's me.
Okay. Can you state your name and your address, please, for the record?
My home address?
Yes, please.
I have to look it up, I'm sorry. I just moved here not too long ago.
Okay.
I don't remember my address. I believe it's 415, it's a high apartment. I can't remember the address. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, you could, you could give it to the clerk later.
Yeah, I will.
I have a question. You, before you were, you had an establishment, you owned Silk Road, correct?
Um, yes.
Okay. And when you were with China Road West, did you own that?
Yes.
Okay. And I have a report from the Nebraska State Patrol that you were cited for selling liquor without a license.
Well, what happened on that day was I, somebody ordered something to go. I went into the kitchen, and then two gentlemen came in, and then they saw some, some beer that was left over in the cooler, and then he asked the waitress, "Can I get a couple beer?" And then the waitress just took it out to them. I didn't know. So, but I did tell the waitress, "We don't have a liquor license." So, but the police, I guess, just undercover, he gave me the ticket.
Yeah, it says that you were stocked with spirits and that there were beers in the cooler.
We only have like five of them there. It was a leftover from the ex-owner.
So, you were cited, though, for selling without a license?
Yes.
Okay. Have you had a hearing on that yet?
Yes. Yeah, I went to court and took care of it. A hearing on?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I went to court and paid the fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you going to be the liquor manager?
I am. I am, Gene.
Okay. And being a liquor manager, you got to make sure you follow all the rules and regulations of the law. This really concerns me, if they were selling liquor without a license.
Well, can I say something?
Sure.
Yeah. I, we did not sell liquor without a license. I mean, we did, just on that one occasion, because the gentleman, I think, because he was the undercover, so he intentionally asked the waitress, "Give her the drinks," okay? But I was in the kitchen, so when I came out, the gentleman told me. He said, "You know, I don't see you guys get the liquor license there. Why are you giving me a beer?"
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to tell you that the, the report from the State Patrol says that they came into your establishment to follow up on reports that you were selling liquor without a license. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been there.
Well, my argument is that is, what I understood is, okay, we were going to get the, to have the liquor license transferred to us, okay? And then, but the liquor board in Lincoln said that we have to have all the paperwork ready before they would do that, to give us a temporary one, okay?
Sure, you have to have a license, though, to sell liquor.
We, I understand.
Okay, okay. Have you ever taken a certified liquor management course with the state?
Not with the state of Nebraska, but I, I have many liquor licenses and never have been any violation. I have liquor license in Texas, California. You know, before I came here, I was, I, I have a liquor license in California.
Okay, but you do understand that you, you have to have a license before you could sell liquor?
Yes, that, that's for sure.
And you have to understand that you have to follow all the rules and regulations of the law.
Absolutely, yes. I understand.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'm trying to find the address for you, but I couldn't find it.
We got it, we got it.
Yeah. Oh, you got it, okay. I couldn't remember where.
Roll call.
Jerem?
No.
Stothard?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
It fails on a two to five vote. Item number 12, the Eclipse Tavern, 1201 South 157th Street, request permission for an addition of the present Class C liquor license of the Sidewalk Cafe. They're requesting a waiver of the fence requirement, and you would, if you wish to grant that, need to grant a condition on their getting the proper permits.
12.
Item 12.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Keith Price, 321 North 153rd Circle, here to represent the Eclipse Tavern in this matter and available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second.
And the waiver of the fence requirement.
Do we have a second? Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero. Item number 13, Ruby Tuesday, 16831 Lakeside Hills Plaza, request permission to appoint Candy Jones, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
I'm Candy Jones, here, manager for Ruby Tuesday, 168th and Lakeside, here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number 14, Old Chicago, 13110 Birch Drive, request permission to appoint Brian Hill, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Brian Hill, manager, Old Chicago, 132nd Maple.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero. We have a request to remove items 29, 30, 31, and 36 from the resolution consent agenda.
29, 30, 31, and 36?
And 36, correct.
Let me see, clerk?
Yeah.
Who's doing 29 and 30?
Gary.
All right. I only want to remove 31 if the council thinks it's all right. I have a question, 29 through 31.
He wanted 29 through 31, too, so, yes.
All right, let's go with 31.
Okay. And 36, yes.
Okay. The public hearings on agenda items number 26 through 28, 32 through 36, are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
This should be 26 through 30, 28, 32 through 35, and 37. We're taking 36 out.
Okay. Stand corrected. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Now, we'll go back to item number 29, which is resolution that the professional services agreement with Altrus Architectural Studios for repair remediation of the NP Dodge Park is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 29 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett? For the Parks Director, in 25 words or less, could you explain what item 29 is requesting regarding this resolution?
Melinda Pearson, Parks Director, City of Omaha. $62,530 for professional services to assess, provide estimates for FEMA work, and then to provide work for bid documents for the cleanup, repair, and construction administration of work on nine building sites in NP Dodge Park.
Okay. All right. This is the first step prior that has to be done?
Yeah. Somebody had a question.
Yes, this is the first step. This does not include any actual remediation or removal or cleanup. This is the professional service portion.
Okay. So, for those out watching this in TV land, the bulldozers won't be there tomorrow if we pass this, correct?
That's true.
Okay. But eventually, what we find out from this professional service agreement will lay a pathway on what needs to be done and the cost for that. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve, 29.
Second.
Mr. Festerson.
She used 30 words.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll also stick a question for Ms. Pearson briefly. So, items number 29 and 30 are both NP Dodge related, and NP Dodge is a major park in our city that's within my district. And as Councilman Gurnett noted, this is kind of the first step towards the remediation of that park, given the severe damage occurring during the flood. So, I thought it might be worthwhile if you could just provide a short status report on the park itself for those that may be watching or curious about the city's intentions as it, as it goes towards repairing that area.
Melinda Pearson, Parks Director, City of Omaha. NP Dodge Park and the Marina were pretty much a total loss. Some of the buildings will be able to be repaired, we hope. Some of the buildings will not and will have to be demolished. The Marina sustained significant damage, and we're trying to assess that now for both the Marina and for the rest of the park. The Marina is a enterprise fund, so the Marina money for renovation will have to come from that enterprise fund, which is why you see two proposals before you, one for the professional services for the enterprise fund, the Marina, and one for the park, which will come out of the general funds and the capital improvement bonds for the park.
Thanks. And this would, as Councilman Gurnett noted, be just the first step towards doing that and assessing what those costs will be. But it'd be accurate to say the city's intention is to replace and renovate NP Dodge Park to its former status before the flood and to have it serve as an ongoing recreational resource for our community for years to come, correct?
Yes, absolutely. We expect to have the park open in a limited amount this spring. Both the Marina and the park should be open this spring. Maybe not the entire area, but certainly the park.
Great, thank you.
Roll call.
So, on item number 29, Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Now, item number 30 is resolution that professional services agreement with Reinhardt and Associates Architects for the repair remediation of Crow's Nest site amenities and electrical at the NP Dodge Marina is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 30 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett? For the Parks Director, this is also for a professional services agreement to do the first step, what is need for the repair and remediation of the Crow's Nest and a few other amenities at MP Dodge, correct? Marina, I'm sorry.
Anything related to the Marina, including the Crow's Nest, the gas pumps, and any of the other buildings around the Marina, including the Marina site itself, the dredging.
And, again, with the approval today, there's not going to be bulldozers there tomorrow. Is that accurate?[1502.51]
the other buildings around the Marina, including the Marina site itself, the dredging?
And, again, with the approval today, there's not going to be bulldozers there tomorrow. Is that accurate?
That's true.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernand.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 31, resolution that the bid from Nebraska's best to furnish labor materials and all other necessities to complete the sediment and debris removal, including but not limited to sand and stuff, from the Freedom Park site restoration, Freedom Park location, is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 31 begins now. Are there any proponents?
I would not be a proponent. I would be an opponent. I would respect the request that this council take--
Sir, we're just doing the proponents now. I'll call for your opponents.
One second.
Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents?
Okay. As I inferred before, I would be an opponent on this particular resolution, item number 31.
Name, please.
My name is John Portera. I represent the USS Hazard Corporations.
And John, if you could, be very concise.
Okay. This particular agenda item only takes care of 15.3 acres of a 67.2 acre site that is owned by the City of Omaha and leased to the Hazard Corporation in kind. The Freedom Park area is leased from the City of Omaha to the Hazard Corporation. With these particular items here, there are FEMA applications made. It is in FEMA legal for the entire site. This was held at a meeting on December 17th with Mr. Rick Cunningham. I believe it is imperative that all parties involved are, have the ability to communicate on this particular agenda item before it is passed. If there are any other particular questions that I can answer to you, I would entertain those. The damage down there was quite extensive, as you are aware. There were two floods down there, 2010 and 2011. We have been ascertaining the proper protocol on the proclamation of this area in an attempt to work with the City of Omaha on this. I've had a meeting with Melinda Pearson on September of 2011, but nothing has come forward on that, even though I have sent emails to her and requesting the same. If this item is to be discussed, I believe that the public and private sectors should meet on this before any appropriate action is entertained.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Public hearing is closed. Oh, excuse me. Any other opponents?
Opponent?
Yes, sir.
Can I do a-- Put it right up. There's a--
Here?
Right there. He'll turn it on for you. There you go.
Okay. Hello, my name's Jay Rybin, 4505 Bernadette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. And I am with Meriwether Campgrounds, a tenant of the City of Omaha through conveyance of lease. On this, on this public document of the entire property of Freedom Park, it clearly, it shows a new concept for the entire property. The dunes at Freedom Park, and it does also include RV Park with the spaces considerably shrunk down to 62 spaces from the originally proposed 105 spaces. My concern is that has material removal been approved by the NRD? Has the option to relocate the materials on property at less expense been reviewed? And has the possibility of discharging the river sediment back into the river been looked at? My concern is also that this area is limited to strictly Freedom Park, and as a tenant of the City of Omaha, I not really understood why the entire property is not being considered in the cleanup restoration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gernand.
Parks Director, again. I'll cut right to the chase. Why, if wasn't this opposition, according to the testimony now, was made known to the Parks Department, why wasn't this dealt with before it reached us? Or was it?
Well, Melinda Pearson, Parks Director for the City of Omaha. I believe we've got two things on the table here. Mr. Portera's concern about the work that's being done on the, how many acres there are for that entire strip. This is, the City of Omaha leases from the Hazard Corporation, who leases from the city the land. And so this 15 acres that we're, that the city, that we're talking about today, this item number 31, is Freedom Park. And of that total 15 acres, we are looking at just doing debris removal around less than five acres of that to get to the artifacts that are in fact part of Freedom Park. So this is a very small portion of the parcel, I believe, that Mr. Portera is talking about with you.
So obviously, there's, stay tuned on this one. There's going to be more, right?
I'm not sure what the question is. Mr. Portera, I think--
Disregard, disregard. I'll yield the floor, Mr. President. Thank you.
Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. Parks Director, again. Melinda?
Yes.
Can you explain, and you did this morning, but I think it's important to briefly explain again publicly, why the importance, what the importance is of going ahead and approving this and moving forward as far as obtaining FEMA money? And the timeframe that we're operating under, that if we delay too long, we might not then be eligible for the money and the reimbursement?
FEMA is, FEMA reimburses, so reimburses cost. And so in order to get the work done, there is a timeframe, and you have to ask for an extension. So it's a six-month timeframe, and you can go upwards of 18 months. So we want to get the work done. The artifacts around Freedom Park are varying degrees of museum pieces, if you'd have it, outdoor. So we feel it's important to get to these pieces as quickly as possible. So what we're doing is really removing the silt and the debris away from these pieces so that we can assess them and see, is it better to move them? Is it better to restore them? So we're in fact just trying to save these pieces on this very limited, less than five acres, is what we're looking at.
So if we would delay this and get all parties together, as Mr. Portera suggested, would that have any disadvantage for the city of waiting and putting this off?
Long term, it could.
As far as receiving the FEMA reimbursements?
Yes. And in fact, this is, the timeliness on this is that we just want to, we want to get to the artifacts in case some of them have some water entrapped, so they'd freeze. We're just trying to, we have not been able to even get to the artifacts that have been buried, some of them under feet of silt.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Pearson, just to clarify, Freedom Park is 15 acres, is that correct?
Yes.
And so this is just, we're only going to look at five acres of the 15 acres. And there's damage on the other 10 acres, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have any future plans then for the other 10 acres?
The 15 acres of Freedom Park is what we lease from the Hazard, which is, so it's just a small portion of the whole riverfront. So Freedom Park is the 15 acres.
Okay. But that's a city park, right? The 15 acres?
Yes.
Okay. But to my point, though, this is just to look at five acres and not the other 10 acres, correct?
That's right.
Do you have future plans to look at the other 10 acres?
We currently have a master plan. We have a couple of master plans. One of them is a master plan of the riverfront, which we saw an example of, which is interesting because we've seen a number of sketches of what the potential riverfront might look like. That was one of many. And then we have a master plan going forward for Freedom Park on where is the ideal location for it.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Rick Cunningham, Planning Director. This whole, this whole issue down at the waterfront on the Hazard Corp and the property, including the Sandpiper Cove, Anchor Inn, and the proposed campground is very complicated. There has been a lot of discussion for a number of years, especially evolving around the Sandpiper Cove, which was damaged first in 2010. We have not, to this date, seen any application for any, for any repair by FEMA, repair funding from FEMA. We have not applied for any monies from FEMA to repair, in particular, the Sandpiper Cove, which was the first item to be damaged in 2010. That's been the bulk of the meetings until this recent flood. Now, the damage is more extensive and includes all of the, basically everything down there, including the Anchor Inn and the Freedom Park. As the Park Director indicated, those 15 acres are leased by the city from Hazard Corp for the Freedom Park. Hazard Corp does indeed then lease, or prior to that, lease the whole 60-some acres from the city. So the ground that everything is on is indeed the City of Omaha property. The improvements for like the Anchor Inn, the former Sandpiper Cove, and there's not much left there, are not property of the City of Omaha. We did not improve those items. They did that as part of their development in that area. The Meriwether Campground and so forth is a tenant of the Hazard Corp and not a direct tenant of the City of Omaha. And that, in fact, that has not been approved yet as far as a development. That was in the development stage, the planning stages, prior to the flood of 2011. So I hope that I have muddied the waters even more, but, so we have not applied for anything other than what our responsibility is as a tenant to the Hazard Corp of the property that we have actually improved, which is the park.
Ms. Stothard. Mr. Gernand.
I was going to call on Mr. Cunningham, so I'll turn my light off.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. And maybe I'll ask this of Mr. Cunningham. Do we have some issues down there with some of those, some of those items being in the floodplain?
We do, as a result of the flood and our interpretation of ordinances related to non-conforming uses in the floodway. And we are in the middle of those discussions with the Hazard Corp, with the Anchor Inn owners and so forth, yes.
Is there, is there a possibility that as far as those items are concerned, that because of where they're located, that FEMA will not respond?
I guess I forgot, I'm Rick Cunningham, the Planning Director.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes, there, our interpretation of our ordinances at this point, related to management of the floodway, is that when you have a non-conforming use, that is subsequently damaged 50% more of its value, that it cannot be reconstructed. Our interpretation, therefore, is that the Sandpiper Cove, for example, cannot be reconstructed. It has been damaged two years in a row. It is basically 100% damaged, cannot be reconstructed because it is a non-conforming use at this point, based on our ordinances. The rest, we are in the debate, the discussion right now, to determine whether we can allow that, the Anchor Inn and other things, to be reconstructed based upon our ordinance. Now, the other part of your question has to do with FEMA, and we as a city are basically their delegated agent to manage the floodway. And so we have to basically manage the floodway, given their regulations. One thing that may have occurred in the haste of repair after the flood is there may have been fill in that area. And as you know, or maybe you don't know, fill has to be approved before you can fill into a floodway. So we are in the middle of a lot of discussions related to all of that.
And isn't that, I guess, I guess my other question is, wouldn't that be, wouldn't because of those discussions and those issues, is that the reason why we're only dealing primarily with the five acres, is because we're not sure about the rest yet?
Well, we're only dealing with what we are responsible for, what our interpretation is that we are responsible for as a tenant of the Hazard Corp.
Okay.
We are a tenant of the Hazard Corp. We improved that property with those artifacts. Those are, while we don't own them directly, they are in our responsible charge from the US government. And so that is the reason public properties is going about to basically respond to the flood damages that were done to our responsibility as a tenant of the Hazard Corp.
Okay. Thank you.
And--
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Cunningham, is the facilities that are located in the five acres, are they approved to be in a floodplain? I mean, is that in question?
Actually, the only use approved by our codes and our ordinances for a floodway, well, not the only, but one of the few, is a park.
Okay.
Such as the Freedom Park.
Such as the Freedom--
Right.
But I mean, we're not, this isn't a waste of $82,000, is it? I mean, if, are we gonna, is--
At some point or time, if we stay, if the Freedom Park stays there, we're going to have to do this work. Otherwise, it will not be accessible to the public, and therefore, why do we even have it if the public can't get to it, one? Two, as the Park Director indicated, we are responsible for that equipment, and so they need to get to it in order to ascertain what needs to be done to preserve that equipment, those artifacts.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Cunningham, did I overhear you, did I hear you correctly when you said there was fill that was not authorized?
We are, we are in the process of ascertaining what exactly has occurred over a period of time, actually, prior to the flood, 2011, and then subsequent to the flood in 2011. We--
What are your findings so far?
We suspect that fill has occurred without the proper permits and approval.
Thank you.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernand.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 36, resolution that the contracts with Building Bright Futures, Urban League of Nebraska, Impact One, Community Connection, Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership for implementation of the truancy prevention program is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number 36 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Alec Karinski, Mayor's Office. I've foreused a resolution to approve the agreements with these community-based organizations to implement and operate truancy prevention intervention programs during 2012. Those organizations are here and would like to provide some commentary today.
Good afternoon. I'm John Kavanaugh, the Executive Director of Building Bright Futures, 1004 Farnham Street. I want to, first of all, thank this council for its vision and foresight in funding this program in the current year. It is one of the most dynamic collaboratives in the city, making a real impact on school attendance, which is one of our critical problems in terms of student achievement. This is a collaboration that involves the University of Nebraska Omaha Attendants Collaborative and the Omaha Public Schools, and a group of program providers, which includes the Y of Greater Omaha, the Urban League, the Collaborative for Youth, and the Latino Center of the Midlands. And they are operating in three middle schools and two high schools. They have measurable reductions in students with more than 10 absences from the first quarter of last year over the first quarter of this year, which is our goal, is to target those students with a history of attendance difficulties, getting to them early and staying with them with youth attendance navigators. So there's an individual assigned to those students who are pre-selected based on their previous attendance record, and then focused on engaging the parents, engaging their counselors, their teachers, the principals, having a surrounding service that is directed at solving that particular student's attendance problem. And this model has proven to be very effective, and your continued support for this model is going to be a significant factor in changing attendance patterns and changing academic success outcomes for students in our community. So I want to thank you for the support and commend you for a program that is truly impacting students in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Warren, Urban League of Nebraska, 3040 Lake Street. At the Urban League of Nebraska, we administer programs in education, youth development, job training, and violence prevention. We have been a partner with the Building Bright Futures Initiative, as well as we've administered summer youth employment programs in partnership with the City of Omaha for the past few years. As Mr. Kavanaugh mentioned, the truancy reduction program has been, has had a significant impact on improving school attendance. You may have seen the article in last week's Omaha World Hurl that highlighted a success story at South High, where as a direct result of an effective intervention strategy, a young man who had missed in excess of 30 days the previous school year now has a 3.2-plus grade point average. That's one example of the impact of effective intervention as a result of the youth attendance navigator serving as advocate for that young man and meeting his needs and coordinating services. We've also administered a summer youth employment program with the funding provided by the City of Omaha, much like the programs at NCAP and the great summer youth employment program. These funds provided an opportunity for the Urban League to employ 20 youth, 20 at-risk youth, to give them an opportunity for gainful employment, work experience, job readiness, workplace etiquette, life management skills, as well as financial literacy. In my opinion, there's no better crime prevention program than employment. And what we've seen the past several years, the past three summers specifically in North Omaha, has been a dramatic decrease in gun violence, gang-related violence, homicides affecting young adults have been eliminated as a result of these summer youth employment programs. So we certainly appreciate the support and the consideration for the City of Omaha. These funds for the Urban League serve as a seed. We do match the funds to increase our capacity to employ young adults during the summer months. And I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Are there any other proponents? If we have any other proponents, you might want to line up here in the aisle. Then you'll find--
Okay. I'm sorry. I should have done that.
That's okay.
I'm Barbara Johnson. I work for NCAP, which is at 2406 Fowler Avenue. NCAP stands for Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership. We're the community action agency that serves Douglas and Sarpy Counties. We're, this is be our second year that we're a part of this program. Last year, we were able to provide over 50 youth with a summer employment program, our FEED Experience, which is our first employment experience team. This year, we would be wanting to use this funding not only to supplant our summer program, but also our year-round school program, that is, the Student Academic Learning Team. In both cases, what we, this money provides us the opportunity to engage youth, to teach them the importance of community leadership, and to help build our stronger communities for the future. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now as well.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick follow-up for Mr. Kavanaugh, if he doesn't mind coming down. I'm glad this item was taken off consent agenda. I think you'll find we're all very supportive of all the things you're doing and appreciate what you're doing. But I think it's good for us to hear about it in forums like this and talk about these issues and how important they are. issues and how important they are. The bulk of this money today does go to the truency youth navigators that you discussed, six of them, I believe. And you said there are in six schools, three middle schools and three high schools? I don't want a South High school, but can you name the rest?
There's two high schools, and then the re-engagement center, which is the Building Bright Futures Sherwood Foundation program for dropout students to get them re, re-engaged in school. And one of the, there's two youth, two half-youth attendance navigators devoted to that program.
Okay.
And that's admitted, that's, the providers there are Boys and Girls Club and Urban League, is that, and Urban League.
And then what, do you know off the top of your head, what schools they're engaged in directly?
Yeah. McMillan, Monroe, Norris, Northwest, and South.
Great. And is the idea, obviously prioritize those schools for, for need and for kids at risk? Is the idea to expand that to other schools, or is it intensifying the concentration on those areas, or what's the outlook for next year?
Well, the program is operated in conjunction with the UNO Youth Attendance or Attendance Collaborative, which is a broader set of programs by Building Bright Futures, which include staff, staff within each building, in twenty-three buildings, having a similar role, and some of these schools overlap and are integrated into those programs. What we're attempting to do is leverage this, the youth attendance navigator focusing on ten-plus absentee students with a range of other programs, which would include our Early Childhood Program for Teen Parenting, which is another high-risk, high-absentee population, so that we have those programs operate in conjunction with each other, providing whatever's the most appropriate level of support to re-engage the students or to keep them engaged and to keep them attending school. So this, when I say this is a collaborative, it's a very broad collaborative in the sense that this program, the youth attendance navigator program, supported by the city, is integrated with all of the other efforts that Building Bright Futures is directing towards improving school attendance and achievement.
Great, thank you. Part of the bigger picture, I think, is the point, right?
Right.
Right, and we appreciate the work they're doing on that, and I think it's entirely appropriate the city participates in this fashion, and we move approval.
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Kavanaugh, if you could just stay real quick. Thank you.
Sure.
We, you said that this is a broad collaborative.
Yes.
Right here. And, so that also includes some private people with some pretty deep pockets, is that correct?
Well, the, the funders of Building Bright Futures are primarily private, it's all ninety percent private money.
And, and so the ninety percent is coming from the community, and I'd just like to say as an editorial that this is one of the unique programs in America, where you have this, this great outcry of people saying, "All the kids belong to all of us." And so I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you. And I also want to thank you, that, that's all I needed, and I also wanted to thank Mr. Warren and Ms. Fowler. I believe in the saying by James Baldwin that the way that our society goes is by how we treat the so-called, what we call at-risk kids. If we engage with them, then we'll have a bright future, not to have a play on words. But if we ignore them, we'll be in big trouble. And so I want to thank you for what you do, but I do know that a lot of my conservative friends would say, "We're not putting enough emphasis on the parents." And that is true, parenting is really slack these days, but I can guarantee you that there are some kids out there that, and they're not into politics, and they're not into, they're too young to understand, and I call them Murphy's Kids. It's a phrase that I use at UNO, and if it could go wrong, it will go wrong for them. And, and these programs help what I call Murphy's Kids. And I've actually seen these kids turn out to be something simply because somebody along the way took an interest in them. You'd be amazed at how many of these kids can go through the years of schooling, and nothing good happens to them, zero. It's amazing the amount of kids that we have in the city where nothing good goes for them. And then all of a sudden, some entity in the school building will do something, turns them around a hundred and eighty degree. I'm a witness to that, not only because of the kids that I've seen, but I myself am one of those Murphy's Kids that was helped. So I, I believe that you're doing the right thing, and bless you, God bless you for what you do. Thank you.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Obey.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And Mr. Gray abstained a second time for potential conflict of interest. It's adopted, five-zero-one passing. Ordinance on final reading, item number thirty-eight, ordinance approving agreement for the sale of city-owned real property to enter into the attached agreement with CNN Francis House for 1145 to 1411 North Eighteenth Street. A's and amendment of the whole.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-eight was held on December thirteenth, 2011.
Move the amendment in the hall.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed it. The amendment of the whole, seven to zero. Item number thirty-nine, ordinance to amend section twenty-one dash seven to promote advertising in city ballfields, tennis complexes, and city-operated indoor ice arenas to add restrictions on such advertising and to require guidelines to establish with such advertising. A's and amendment of the whole, beads of communication.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Now, item forty-two.
Roll call.
Need a motion.
Same motion, same second, yeah. Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number forty-one through forty-three, there are three settlements of lawsuits, we'll take them all for one public hearing at least. Resolution, City of Omaha Law Department is authorized to make an offer to allow judgment in the case Anthony Coleman Senior versus the city. Forty-two is, resolution, City of Omaha is authorized to make an offer in the judgment in the Robert McCurry versus Gerald Swanson et al. And forty-three is resolution, the law department is authorized and directed to pay the bill submitted from Creighton University Med Center for medical care for Alexander Siemens.
Public hearing on agenda items number forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three begin now. Are there any proponents?
We can't.
Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
We won't do those individually for votes, we'll just do the public hearing. So forty-one.
Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Now, item forty-two.
Roll call.
Need a motion.
Same motion, same second, yeah. Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And item three?
Roll call.
Same motion, same second. Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven H, the third reading on agenda item number forty-four through forty-six shall be held on January tenth. The public hearing on these items are today. Item forty-four, ordinance approving amendment number two of the professional services agreement with Lovegrind Marketing Group continuing to provide services as public involvement facilitator for the combined sewer overflow project.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-four begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, I'm Linda Lovegrind, President of Lovegrind Marketing Group at 809 North Ninety-Sixth Street, and I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you very much. Linda, you provided us with a document that really described in detail the scope of the work you do, but I thought if you could just briefly, for those who might be watching at home, and for the citizens that don't understand what this contract is about and what the scope of work you do is, could you just briefly review what you do?
Absolutely. The CSO program is an unfunded federal mandate, as you know, and we have named it Clean Solutions for Omaha as a way of helping our citizens relate to a very technical process. In wastewater terms, CSO is combined sewer overflow. And, and what this unfunded federal mandate is about is that because we have combined sewers largely east of Seventy-Second Street, and we have a lot of capacity issues with those sewers, the federal mandate is that we must reduce the overflows of raw sewage to the Missouri River and the Papio Creek from an average of fifty-two a year to four a year. And so in the process of doing that, between 2006 and 2009, there was a great deal of conversation, research, and information gathered about how we could most effectively and efficiently do this. And through that time, a long-term control plan was developed, and that was submitted to the regulators in the fall of 2009, and it was approved early in 2010. And after that, we began to implement the projects, the design work, and the actual construction of projects that would solve this problem and meet the regulators' requirements of the city. What my firm has been doing over that period of time is conducting public meetings. We are responsible for what I will call three areas: communications, collaboration, and connection. And this is a very planned and strategic process with the CSO program. It is to help the public understand, not only the public east of Seventy-Second Street, but all of the public involved in the wastewater system that we have, which is about a two-hundred-and-fifty-mile, square-mile radius, to help them understand what this project is all about in more detail, and to allow them to have input into the ideas that are being brought forward. So we do things such as develop educational handouts, we manage a website and its content, we publicize meetings, participate in aspects of both the program and the project communication. So all of that is consistent across the board and is a total effort. We manage the hotline and the web comments that come into us. We make public presentations and support the city in the program as far as media relations is concerned, when there are questions from the media, both broadcast and, and print. This is a complex program, and we understand that today the public expects to have a high level of engagement when the city is making decisions of this magnitude, and we, we hope that the education that we're providing and the communications that we're providing will give them confidence in those decisions. And Lovegrind Marketing thanks you for the effort, for the opportunity to be part of this extraordinary effort.
And Linda, there, there's over seven hundred cities in, across the United States that are dealing with the same thing we are, with the combined sewer overflow issue. And I know you are aware of what some other cities, similar size to Omaha, are, are spending for services like yours. This may seem a lot to some people, it's about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, but it's a two-year contract.
Right.
But are you aware, as far as the average amount some cities are spending on such efforts as what you are doing?
Well, first, I want to clarify one thing, that the, the city has a public involvement component in the, the program, which is the total overview of what the CSO program is about. But as each of the projects unfold, and there are going to be over eighty of them, there's also a public involvement component built into those programs. So you need to look at the big picture of what all that communication will be. So this is not the only, the only dollars that will go into communications. So that's one point I'd like to make. But the second thing is that other cities like Kansas City, which we often use as a comparison, in its first year of their program spent about a million and a half dollars on public communications, but they went about it differently. We are going about it neighborhood by neighborhood, we are working through community groups, all of these collaborations that we have, so we're doing that a little differently. They went out and purchased Media Time to promote public service announcements about the program and what it was doing in the community. And we've actually met with people in Kansas City who participated in that, and also on their city council. And I'm pleased to say that they were rather amazed that we were able to accomplish what we have with the dollars that we are spending, but we are spending them differently. So I think every community needs to decide how best to relate to its citizens.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gray.
Yes, Mr. President, I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank Linda for the work that they continue to do. I want to thank our parks director, too, because while they talk about our meetings, some of our meetings are a little bit more contentious than some of the others. Their professionalism continues to shine through. We continue to dispel myths that are out there and, and address those as, as best we can. And I just wanted to thank you and, and the parks director, Melinda Pearson, for your professionalism and continuing to engage the community in moving forward on this project.
That's next week, or, January tenth. Item forty-six, or, or item forty-five, ordinance to accept the bid of Alamo Uniform to provide firm price commitment on Omaha Police Department Standard Uniform Items.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item forty-six, ordinance to approve an agreement with Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, Heartland Family Services, Women's Center for Advancement, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, Douglas County Attorney's Office, State of Nebraska District Number Four Probation Office, to provide funding to strengthen and coordinate Omaha's response to domestic violence.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-six begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
After hours dance permit, item number forty-seven, resolution, the application of the Omaha Mining Company for an issuance on after-hours dance permit at 1715 Lovemore Street is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number forty-seven begins now. Are there any proponents?
Terry Tippett, 1715 Lovemore Street, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem?
Yes.
Stothard?
Yes.
Thompson's out of the chambers. Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted six to zero. We'll take item number fifty-five next. Resolution that the attached professional services contract between the City of Omaha, O'Hara Lindsay, and Associates for any professional representation in Nebraska legislation on any legislative bills, resolutions, amendments, and studies that affect the City of Omaha during the legislative session is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Oops, there's an opponent, there's an opponent.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Wren.
Sorry, Mr. President, I'll be brief. I was asked, Patrick Wren, 13871 Sprague Street, I was asked to speak before the council today in opposition to hiring any more lobbyists for the City of Omaha. I had a mutual agreement with a couple people to, to turn that into form of a question, so maybe we can be sold on the idea, and we'll, we'll leave it at that. But down to business, you've got a couple people representing the city now. Jack seems to be pretty competent. You're paying him ninety-five thousand dollars a year to represent the city's interest. According to the article in the World Hurl, he's basically overburdened, doesn't have enough time to work with all the forty-nine senators down there. That may or may not be the case, but there are fifty weeks ahead of the year, and I find it kind of hard to believe that he, he's not putting in forty hours a week, weekend, week-end. out, working with the senators down there in Lincoln. And you have another gentleman by the name of Walt Ratkey, or Ratkip, I believe. Excuse me on pronunciation, but anyway. It's kind of difficult to believe that the city needs more lobbying when we have, and please put me in my place, we have state senators that we've elected to represent the city's interests. And I personally know for a fact that a gentleman by the name of Gene Leahy used to use state senators, mostly Democrat, A, B, and I realize that, but some Republicans, to carry the ball for the City of Omaha. They're down there, they have influence, we have some competent state senators down there. You've got Cook, Council, Ashford, Mr. Lathrop, amongst others. It's difficult for me to comprehend why don't we have them representing more of the city council's interest, okay? We're told in the paper that Mr. Lindsay and Mr. O'Hara have saved the city a great deal of money. Well, that may be the case, but I think that should be made public, what they actually did save the city in terms of what the legislature was going to take away from us, which would make the current mayor's argument a little more prudent. You know, you've got, I know you have a lot of problems here with the council, you've got a lot of burdens, but the city's over $1 billion of bond indebtedness. You're paying what, $53, $54 million a year in interest alone? You've got this pension fund that, I'm just making statements here and it'll be true, well over half a billion dollars. You have to quietly ask yourself, do we need to be spending any more money down there when we already have two allegedly competent lobbyists and all those state senators that we can call on to do some of the different tasks that need to be done? You know, doggone well, it's no reflection of Mr. O'Hara-Lindsay, they're just going to, you know, I don't know how the game operates, I've had too many city councilmen talking at our kitchen table in North Omaha when Mr. Leahy was mayor, and they're just going to be entertaining another Irishman in the bars down there, okay? Maybe they're going to get something done, maybe they're not. But if you can show the public, in fact, how much money they really did save the city, then, you know, maybe they should be hired. But I really have to question that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you. This is just, it's something that I don't support today, but the questions that I would ask is, what are we doing, and are we doing the best thing with the public dollars? Are we going to achieve anything, and is the city going to gain anything that we don't already have? We do have a full-time lobbyist, I think he's very competent and capable of doing that job down there. This is a short session this year, and I think historically, on big issues, the City of Omaha has put together a local team to deal with big issues, but not just by hiring more lobbyists, but by putting a team together with our lobbyists, city council members, community leaders, citizens and such, that can go down and express their positions and lobby on certain issues. And I think a good example is, was with the Quest Center with Mayor Dob and the Civic Center with P.J. Morgan. But I think if you get a local team together, you can be successful without just hiring other lobbyists. And so I think, you know, if the city has extra money, I would like to see it, I think it could be better used for our full-time lobbyist to maybe expand what he does and give him more tools to be influential. But I don't believe at this time that hiring an additional lobbyist for the issues that we're dealing with this year is a good use of taxpayer money. Thanks.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Warren Weaver. Warren Weaver, council staff.
You've known Mr. Chaloha, Jack Chaloha, a very long time, is that correct?
Yes, 17 years.
What would you say his reputation with the League of Municipalities is?
Well, in conversations with the League, and I do have several with them, it's very high. They're...
Would you have the same assessment with regards to his work with the senators? Have you felt or have you heard from Mr. Chaloha that he's overburdened or that he's, just has too much on his plate?
No, I don't believe so. He is down at the legislature on a daily basis, he tracks all the bills. I wouldn't say he's overworked, no.
And you're satisfied with his job performance?
I am, yes.
Thank you very much. I'm also not going to vote for this, partially because of that testimony that I just heard, but also I'm impressed by one of my councilmen this morning who talked about, I believe it was Councilman Gray, he says, "A lot of times what we need is not another lobbyist, we just need ourselves to go down and put in some shoe leather and get some work done." And so I like that, and I think we can get a lot done by doing that. You don't always need to spend money to get things, you just need to do things a different way, I think. But most of all, I'm going to vote no, because I'm not convinced last year that the expenditure for the extra lobbyists was worth the money. I'm not convinced that we got our monies worth last year. So for those reasons, it's not a swipe at the mayor, but for those reasons, going back to my fiscally conservative roots, I'm going to have to vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Dr. Thompson, you were right, I had some concerns about, you know, having another lobbyist down there. Since had a couple of conversations with the mayor and some others. And while I still have some concerns about it, it's going to be, it's going to be a pretty difficult sell for me next year. But this year, I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt. You know, I'm going to see what they do. I just, I don't, I didn't think that we got a lot of it, out of it last year either. But after having conversations with him and talking to a couple of others, it, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt this year, it's going to be very difficult to do it again next year if we don't see any results this year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, it's my belief that one would have an incredibly short historical perspective if we were to overlook what has been an aggressive anti Omaha agenda in the legislature the last couple of sessions.
That's true too, that's part of my reason too.
And we have Omaha senators, in fact, voting to strip funding from Omaha in the middle of our budget year on state aid to cities, on the wheel fee. And the fact is Omaha senators voted that way. And as I look at this, Jack Chaloha, our lobbyist, needs all the help he can get to try to stop the tide of anti Omaha sentiment and just making this the big donor city while the money flows southwest down I-80, and we're struggling to get what little we can back for the Omaha taxpayers that work so hard to pay into the system. And this is just a token of $31,000, which in terms of lobbyists is very reasonable. And I believe addressed, Councilmember Festerson last year raised concerns about the amount, this is a very reasonable deal in my mind. And it gives Jack that added help that the mayor has requested, that this mayor isn't the first to do this, that Mayor Fahey did, I believe Mayor Dob did. And this in terms of lobbyists, very few of the past mayors, if any, actually brought this stuff to the council. So I thank them for coming in proactively this year before the session in what I would deem a tone-down financial cost to this in a time when Jack needs all the help that he can get. And the city, after all, is the beneficiary of that, and the taxpayers here who, just tell me anyway in my district how they're concerned, that the money just seems to flow down to Lincoln. And then they cut us off in the middle of our budget year last year. I don't, is Ms. Spacrotella back there? How many millions did we lose in the middle of the budget last year?
Pam Spacrotella, Finance Director, we lost the state aid for $3 million, we lost the commuter wheel fee for $2.8 million, and we are losing the ETJ for another $3.1 million, and that was last year's legislative session.
And so, and there were Omaha senators that voted to basically cut us off the knees on that. And you could be, you could have a Superman logo or Superwoman logo on your suit as a lobbyist, and unfortunately last year, Mr. Chaloha was unsuccessful in his efforts to get that stopped, and Mr. Lindsay was, but that doesn't mean that we still don't need people down there, at least making the senators think about what they're doing to the taxpayers of Omaha, especially those that live in Omaha that are voting that way. Maybe we call them the conscience police, say, "Look what you're doing to Omahans, Omaha senators. You're killing us financially in the middle of a budget year." This, to me, $31,000 is very modest, and it's well-needed. So I make the motion approved.
Second. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. I'll make this short. The same thing that's happening in Washington is happening here locally. There's a lot of gridlock, there's a lot of playing around, and there's a lot of partisanship going on. And no, no amount of extra expenditures is going to fix that. It's a problem of the heart, and people who are elected need to go back to their roots and do what they were elected for. We've got a broke system here. The system is broken, and I think the people who are elected are the ones that need to fix it, not necessarily a lobbyist. Thank you.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
It's adopted on a 4-3 vote. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the second reading of public hearing on agenda, item number 48 through 52 shall be held on January 10.
Motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.